Good morning, everyone. If you can all take your seats, we'll get this very important meeting going. And I would ask you to please mute your phones if we have a problem. Technically, we'll pause for a moment to get it together. And for those of you that are able, could we rise and say our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, and to the nation, now indivisible, indivisible, and just.
Thank you very much, everyone. Today, I welcome everyone to our joint meeting between the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee and our Education Committee. And the hearing is on House Bill 1768, which is the Keystone Fresh Act. I'm now calling this meeting to order. And Paula, would you please take role for the Ag Committee members? Leave. Let the record show that we have leave slips for all Dem and Republican members of the Ag and Rural Affairs Committee. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Chairman Burgos. I'm sorry, to Chairman Pete Schwire. Take role.
Thank you, sir. Actually, we don't typically take role on informational hearings in the Ed Committee. I'm not sure if the rules say that we should or shouldn't with a joint hearing. But so I think our guys are good. But we certainly do have leave slips for everyone. But if, Mr. Chairman, if now's an appropriate time to have an opening comment, I can certainly do that if that's where you are in your agenda, sir.
We're just following our typical procedure, so.
Okay. Yeah, we have leave slips for anybody who's not here. We don't take role for informational hearings, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, at this time, it is indeed my pleasure to invite our first panel to take your positions in the monitoring box. We have the Director of Bureau of Food and Nutrition and State Director of Child Nutrition Programs, Vonda Ramp, and we also have Karen Long Earl, Director Bureau of Food Assistance, Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture. Okay. Would you mind just pausing for a moment? The gentleman who's causing this meeting to take place has just arrived.[265.02][265.02](Laughter) And we're so grateful for his, all his hard work on this bill, which is so important for so many, especially our children. Representative Chairman Burgos, would you like to make a few statements?
Thank you, Chairman Piszczynski and Chairman Mao. Good morning, everyone. And members of the House Agriculture and Education Committee for hosting this morning's hearing. On my bill, House Bill 1768, the Keystone Fresh Act. As we'll hear today, this legislation is designed to have more Pennsylvania grown produce, food served in our schools and on the lunch trays of students across our Commonwealth. It also opens the door for our family farmers and veteran-owned farms to feed the next generation, and in doing so, connecting young people with where their food comes from. Because it's right, because it's right now, despite over 700 million school food budget, less than 2% of this is spent in Pennsylvania grown products. That means our kids are eating produce that traveled hundreds, sometimes thousands of miles, while the apples, corn, beef, and many other products produced by our neighbors are being left out. The Keystone Fresh Act would help to change this by giving schools the resources they need to buy and use more local ingredients, while also helping farmers get the equipment and support they need to meet school meal standards. More fresh, local, and healthy food in our cafeterias will make lunches more desirable and nutritious, and ensure that more tax dollars stay right here in our communities. With recent uncertainties surrounding local food purchasing programs at the federal level, it is critical that Pennsylvania takes action to help get more local food in our schools. And I believe that today's hearing will show that the best way to do this is to pass the Keystone Fresh Act. In doing so, we will be growing our economy from the ground up while giving our kids the nutrition they need to learn, grow, and thrive, all while supporting Pennsylvania's farmers and producers. Thank you again to Chairman and members of the Ag and Education Committee, especially all of today's testifiers. I look forward to working together on this important piece of legislation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Chairman Burgos. And your bill and the work that you and those that have participated illustrates once again the importance of our children. They are our future. And we all know that if you're hungry, you're not going to learn. So I really encourage everyone to be listening very carefully to this testimony because incredible amount of information that's out there. I think many of us didn't know about these numbers and exactly what's transpiring. So I thank you again, Chairman Burgos, for your good work on this. And I welcome our members here. I can't see everybody. And I welcome you all. And we're going to start off first with, here we are. There it is. May I call you, Vonda, Director of Bureau of Food and Nutrition and State Director of Child Nutrition Program. It's all yours. Take it. Make sure that's on. Press the, there you go.
Good morning, Chairman.
Bring that microphone closer to you to make sure it's, there you go.
How's that? Still?
Is that, there you go.
Okay. All right. Put it right there. Good morning, Chairmen Piszczynski, Mao, Schwire, and Cutler, and members of the House Agricultural and Rural Affairs and Education Committees. My name is Vonda Ramp, as you've heard, and I am the State Director of the Child Nutrition Programs for the Bureau of Food and Nutrition within the Pennsylvania Department of Education. On behalf of the Department of Education, thank you for the invitation to testify about the importance of fresh, local foods in schools. PDE has an established record of promoting local, fresh foods in schools through the provision of educational materials, resources, training, and mini-grants. I've been with the department for 23 years and in this position for 17. As a mom, a registered dietitian, and a child of a once-upon-a-time Pennsylvania dairy farmer, I understand the synergistic benefits of supporting the nutrition and health of children at the same time of supporting Pennsylvania farmers and growers. While it might sound simple for schools and farmers to create a buy-and-sell relationship, today I hope to provide an overview of the current landscape, the success of initiatives to date, and opportunities to continue advancing on the progress. The Bureau of Food and Nutrition oversees the federal child nutrition programs, which includes the school lunch program, under the umbrella of the school nutrition programs, the child and adult care food programs, and the summer meal programs. Each of these programs has meal requirements for fruits, vegetables, a meat or meat alternative, whole grains, and milk. During the 24-25 school year, Pennsylvania schools served approximately 192 million lunches and 93 million breakfasts. This is large-scale purchasing that schools do. Over the last two years, as a result of the Governor's Free Breakfast for All, there has been nearly a 14% increase in breakfast participation. Simultaneously, the Governor's School Breakfast Challenge has encouraged schools to promote breakfast participation while reducing the number of high-sugar breakfast products, incorporate new semi-scratch or scratch recipes, and incorporate local foods into the breakfast menu. By the end of the challenge, schools had to incorporate a minimum of two local foods each week, excluding milk. Despite the reputation that school meals often receive, they are some of the healthiest meals that students have access to. USDA developed the Healthy Eating Index, or HEI, to assess diet quality using actual dietary intake compared to that of the dietary guidelines for Americans. Research shows that across most income and ethnicity categories, students who participate in school lunch program have significantly higher HEI scores than non-participants, and this includes foods brought from home. This means the dietary intake of students consuming school meals aligns with the recommended nutrition guidelines more than students who do not consume school meals. School meals are also a laboratory for teaching students about good nutrition, introducing them to new foods, educating them on where the food comes from and how it is grown. Recognizing this, in 2009, PDE expanded its collaborative partnership with Penn State University Department of Nutrition to develop materials, offer trainings, and provide funding to promote local food sourcing. What started as an information gathering session with stakeholders has evolved into strong partnerships that continue to shape a methodical approach to expanding farm-to-school connections in Pennsylvania. A list of those valuable partners is included in the written testimony. Over the years, the department has provided numerous education sessions and facilitated peer-endorsed best practices on local food sourcing. While these education sessions have been appreciated by hundreds of nutrition directors, there are two resources that stand out that I'd like to highlight today. The first is the hands-on culinary trainings, and the second is the PA Harvest of the Month. Just since 2023, more than 325 school nutrition professionals have participated in small-group, hands-on culinary sessions led by a professional chef. These trainings increase school nutrition operators' familiarity with Pennsylvania produce, how to purchase, store, and prepare the foods in the quantities required for a school setting. The department consistently receives positive feedback on these trainings, and operators report that they are more receptive to trying new products and preparation methods after attending these training sessions. I have attended a couple of these training sessions, and they are fun, they're interactive, and I walk away inspired. When I come home, I go on a PA produce purchasing spree and start cooking a lot of stuff up in my kitchen and driving my family quite crazy. But I do encourage you and invite each of you that when the culinary sessions resume next summer, there's an open invitation if you want to see one in person, in action. The other thing I would like to encourage you to check out is the Pennsylvania Harvest of the Month website. As the name implies, the website promotes the use of local Pennsylvania foods. With nearly 19,000 viewers just so far in 2025, this is a popular and broadly-used resource that has a much broader reach than the limited capacity of the culinary trainings. Each product, each featured product contains recipes for home and schools, fact sheets, family newsletters, gardening information, signage, social media post suggestions, and my favorite, the short culinary videos. This month, as you would expect, the highlighted product, Pennsylvania product, is apples. PDE also offers schools mini-grants to support taste testing of local foods, school gardens, field trips, local food education, and chef visits. Research demonstrates that children are innately neophobic to foods, which means they can be reluctant to trying something new, and it can take up to 15 to 20 repeated exposures before a child may even be willing to taste a new food. Exposing students to new tastes in a fun and interactive way increases their familiarity and their willingness to try new foods. Chefs and farmers are rock stars when they go into a school, and students are often willing to try things that they would not have normally been willing to try. We are proud of the work we have done in this area, and we feel these efforts are contributing to the increasing awareness and the involvement in farm-to-school practices. The USDA conducts a farm-to-school census about every four to five years. When comparing the results between the 2019 and 2023 censuses, participation in farm-to-school activities in Pennsylvania increased from 75% to 81%. The percentage of total food costs schools spent on local products, and this is excluding milk, increased from 7.1% to 8.9%. Of notable importance is 49% of the respondents who participated in farm-to-school have been doing so for less than three years, and that demonstrates that we are just getting started. However, challenges remain with local sourcing of products. School nutrition operators must find local growers and producers that can provide products in the quantity necessary for an institutional-sized operation. Meet delivery needs, they must offer lower price points, and they must also, the directors must also provide training for staff, and identify funding opportunities to purchase and prepare local foods. Local growers and producers are often stunned to understand the complexities of the school nutrition programs, such as the procurement and the nutrition requirements, the importance of consistent product size, quality specification, and tight purchasing budgets. Additionally, growers require time and resources to respond to large-scale requests from schools, but may be hesitant to make those investments in the necessary resources, such as increased crop production, equipment, storage, transportation, if the purchasing market is not consistent and reliable. However, when good relationships are formed between producers and schools, they can be longstanding and mutually beneficial. Recognizing the growing interest of the Local Food Purchasing Incentives, or LFPI, programs, which involve the allocation of state or federal funds from the purchase of locally grown foods to serve in schools, such as the Keystone Fresh Act, PDE commissioned an LFPI study in 2022 in partnership with Penn State University through a USDA grant. The study examined legislative language, funding structures, implementation strategies, and partnerships associated with local food purchasing initiatives that were adopted in other states. The Pennsylvania Local Food Purchasing Incentive Investigation was completed in September of 2023. Some key takeaways from the study are that the reimbursement and reporting structures need to be simple, the program needs to be locally flexible, funding needs to be substantial enough to cover the cost of purchasing and preparing local foods, the funding needs to be consistent so that growers and producers can adjust their production to accommodate dependable farm-to-school purchasing relationships. Food aggregators, such as food hubs, the Common Market in southeastern PA, and produce auctions were identified as valuable partners for both schools and growers and can reduce the complexities and the risks for both parties. Alongside our tremendous farm-to-school partners, we are excited to enter a new phase of our farm-to-school work, beginning just this month. The department will begin work to establish a producer directory that collects key data points to assist school nutrition operators, local growers, and local producers in making streamlined connections. While Pennsylvania has experienced a steady growth in farm-to-school programs, and we are extremely proud of the accomplishments thus far, additional resources will enhance opportunities for local partnerships and provide needed support for school nutrition operators. We look forward to continuing the conversation on this topic. I would like to commend Chairman Burgos on his initiative to provide fresh, locally-sourced ingredients for healthy school meals through the Keystone Fresh Act. Thank you again for inviting the department to participate in this discussion.
Thank you very much for that valuable information. And now we'll hear from Karen. Karen Long Earl, Director Bureau of Food Assistance.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Chairman Piszczynski. Good morning, everyone. Thank you to Chairman Piszczynski, Chairman Mao, and Chairman Cutler, and to the members of the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee and the members of the Education Committee for inviting me to be here this morning. As the chairman said, my name is Karen Long Earl, and I'm the Director of the Bureau of Food Assistance with the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture. On behalf of the department, thank you for the opportunity to join you today, not only to discuss the important roles that nutrition and food security play in our schools and in the lives of our children, but also for the opportunity to shine a light on the role that Pennsylvania farmers and agribusinesses play in ensuring food and nutrition security throughout our Commonwealth. Taking the lessons learned from the COVID pandemic, our department has recommitted ourselves to strengthening our local and regional food systems, enabling us to further shore up the food supply chain. An implementation of policies like the Keystone Fresh Act can play a vital role in strengthening our local food systems by ensuring that state and school dollars can be spent with local producers to provide healthy, nutritious school meals. Bureau of Food Assistance helps to ensure that all Pennsylvanians, regardless of geographic location, demographics, and socioeconomic status, have consistent access to healthy, nutritious foods. Using state and federal resources, the Bureau works with Pennsylvania's regional food banks, more than 800 school food authorities, and child nutrition providers, and nearly 3,000 local food pantries, and other nonprofit organizations to distribute critical food supplies and funding. State and federal food assistance programs that we administer include the State Food Purchase Program, the Pennsylvania Agricultural Surplus System, the Emergency Food Assistance Program, the Farmers Market Nutrition Program, and USDA Foods in Schools. The USDA Foods Program supports nutrition programs and American agricultural producers through the purchase of 100% American-grown foods for use by schools and institutions participating in the federal child nutrition programs that Vonda has described. USDA's Agricultural Marketing Service develops product specifications for these USDA foods and then manages the solicitation and awards process in order to procure foods specifically requested from the child nutrition providers, from the lowest-priced, qualified bidders for each destination. Because of a large volume of product being sourced and because of the price points dictated by the federal procurement process, vendors that participate in the USDA Foods Program tend to be larger-scale food producers and food processors. While Pennsylvania tends to do very well in this process, ranking third in terms of states participating in the USDA Foods Programs, admittedly, these tend to be our larger-scale food providers and not necessarily our local, regional food suppliers. These USDA child nutrition programs are critical resources in meeting the needs of some of Pennsylvania's most vulnerable residents. In fact, for some children, the nutritious meals provided by USDA's child nutrition programs may be the only meals these children have consistent access to. According to MAP the Meal Gap data published by Feeding America, in 2003, more than 475,000 children in all 67 counties in Pennsylvania were at risk of hunger and did not always know where their next meals were coming from. That number represents 18.1% of all children in Pennsylvania, one out of every six. Research shows that children who don't have adequate access to food face numerous short-term and long-term effects. Children who experience hunger early in life are more apt to experience delays and deficits in both physical and cognitive development and to develop mental health challenges. As a result, hunger can change the way a child grows, thinks, learns, and behaves. This is why it is critical to connect children living in households of all income levels with access to healthy, nutritious foods from their earliest days of life. Working in partnership with our, our department collaborates with Pennsylvania's Departments of Health, Education, and Human Services to administer an array of critical food assistance programs to help ensure that all children have the nutrients they need to grow and thrive. At the same time, we are working to ensure that our children have access to the nutritious food they need. Our department is also working to ensure a successful future for Pennsylvania agriculture. According to the 2022 USDA Census of Agriculture, Pennsylvania is home to more than 49,000 farms. With each farm averaging 144 acres, 95% of these farms are considered to be small-family farms. In a rich agricultural state like Pennsylvania, especially one with significant diversity in what our farmers produce, creating greater connections between school meals and Pennsylvania products has been a key emphasis for our department. That's why in 2019, as part of the Pennsylvania Farm Bill, the department launched a farm-to-school grant program. This grant program, which is currently open for applications through November 14th of this year, provides a vehicle for schools to increase local food procurement and launch training programs that help students make a connection between their school meals and the local farmers who produce those meals. To date, this grant program has allocated over $2.8 million to 281 Pennsylvania schools. We have found the success of this program is often coming in areas identified by USDA as food deserts. Grant programs like Farm-to-School can play a role in equipping and empowering schools to adjust their menus to reflect the seasonality of locally-produced products. These changes mean that students are receiving fresh, nutritionally-dense meals while also understanding the critical role that nutrition plays in their lives. Across Pennsylvania, farmers too are finding success partnering directly with schools on special events, such as serving locally-grown sweet corn, or coming into long-term contracts to serve school meals. To help facilitate meaningful partnerships between growers and schools, our department has been offering a wholesaling-to-institutions training program. Through this comprehensive training, producers in Pennsylvania receive instruction and ongoing technical support and peer-to-peer mentoring. To date, 119 producers throughout Pennsylvania have benefited from this intensive training. As you've heard my colleague from Department of Education, these and other efforts appeal to be yielding some success as more Pennsylvania schools report serving local foods. Despite these gains, however, more work remains to be done. While schools report interest in increasing local food sourcing, tight school food budgets and lack of available funds often preclude them from expanding their volume of local food purchases. At the same time, family farmers and producers who want to enter the school food market report they face barriers to entry due to the complicated nature of understanding and meeting school meal standards and competition from larger distributors. This is where local food purchase incentive programs, or LFPIs, can provide value. LFPI programs are government-funded programs that help schools, institutions, and charitable feeding organizations like food banks buy local food, strengthen local economies, improve food access, and build resilient food systems. These efforts provide funding for food purchases, technical assistance, and infrastructure support for farmers and food distributors. A good example of a federally-funded LFPI that until recently was being offered in Pennsylvania until the abrupt cancellation by USDA is the Local Food Purchase Assistance Cooperative Agreement Program, or LFPA. Over the three years that LFPA operated in Pennsylvania, our department used approximately $28 million to source nearly 30 million pounds of locally-produced Pennsylvania product from 189 Pennsylvania producers. These nutritious foods were then supplied to 14 large regional food banks, who in turn distributed them to over 5 million Pennsylvania households facing food insecurity in all 67 counties. LFPA was lauded as a success by the farmers participating in the program, several of whom were struggling to find markets for their products in the wake of COVID-19-related business closures, by the food banks who were facing increased demands for food assistance, and by our food insecure neighbors who appreciated the access to fresh, local foods. The Keystone The Keystone Fresh Act provides an opportunity for this same type of win-win approach by creating and funding a local food incentive for schools. Pennsylvania could realize the same benefits seen through programs that connect farmers to food banks. Our school food authorities who operate on tight fiscal margins would have access to funds that would enable them to engage in more local food purchasing. Small local Pennsylvania producers would be provided with increased opportunities to sell to schools along with funds for technical assistance that would enable them to reach the school food market. And perhaps more importantly, our children would have increased access to fresh, healthy Pennsylvania grown foods. The Keystone Fresh Act, if passed into law and funded, would build upon the successes already achieved with farm-to-school programming and local food sourcing by the Pennsylvania Departments of Education and Agriculture, our schools, and our partners. Moreover, the Keystone Fresh Act provides an opportunity to make real investments in two of Pennsylvania's most critical resources, our rich agricultural industry and our children. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you so much, both of you, for your very important testimony. Obviously, we always have time constraints, so we're going to limit the number of questions that we have for panel one. The first question is from Representative Schlegel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I was kind of curious when I learned that while there is grant funding for for this program, the Keystone Fresh Act, the funding is not necessarily the same for preschool programs, also known as early care educational programs. And one of the reasons is because of administrative responsibilities or the increase thereof. And I was just wondering if you could touch very briefly on what are some of those inhibitors in terms of the administrative responsibilities that would have to be increased?
So, most oftentimes preschools, early childhood, childcare centers, they operate through the Child and Adult Care Food Program, which is a different child nutrition program than the school lunch program. Certainly an important age group to target. And they're, they're oftentimes, because it's a smaller setting, they are more easily able to establish relationships with local farmers. As you heard Karen say, the 99% of the farmers, I believe, in Pennsylvania are, are local family farms. So because of the small size, there is a, there is a better ability to establish those relationships. I will say that we've offered the culinary trainings to childcare, to childcare centers director staff. And they are, it's a challenging group because they are understaffed and they can't take time away from, from their centers in order to participate in the trainings. So we're hoping that the producer directory will be a real benefit to not just schools but to all, all avenues in the Commonwealth to help them understand, know, realize where their local farmers and where their local growers are to help them more easily make that connection. The last thing I'll say on that is oftentimes the procurement requirements are a little bit easier to maneuver around because they are purchasing on a smaller scale so they can purchase more under what's called the micro purchase threshold than having to go through formal procurement that schools often have to go through. So there definitely is a lot of potential there.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chairman Mao?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to probably go to a spot I shouldn't go to, but I'm, I've got to. In this bill, it says that preference is going to be given to socially disadvantaged group, which includes race, color, national origin, age, disability, sex, marital status, familial status, parental status, religion, sexual orientation, genetic information, political beliefs, or participation in any public assistance program and on and on. Who gets to decide that?
I would say from both of the departments' standpoints, we would follow the direction of the legislation. Whatever would be enacted is what we would follow.
Well, I'm reading the actual definition of socially disadvantaged group and I'm trying to figure out, are you going to pick somebody in your departments to say, okay, we decided that there is a socially disadvantaged group in this particular school district, so they get it, but not in that one? Is there somebody picked out that's going to be the person who makes this decision? Rather than just saying, all schools across the board get treated equally so that we don't pull attention to somebody or some group of people that maybe don't want attention pulled to them?
I think that that is an excellent question and
It's one we gotta know the answer to before this bill can go.
Yeah, and I think that as we continue discussions about the bill, that is something that we definitely need to dive deeper into to determine how that will, how that will be determined. But we, yeah, we look forward to continuing those discussions to dive into the details such as those. But those, that's a great, it's a great point that you pulled out.
Yeah, and I'm thinking in my district, we're having a lot of Amish people move in as well. Where do they fit into this? There's a lot to be discussed with this bill and that's, that's one very big piece that we need, a bridge that we need to cross. We're all for getting kids eating healthy food. No question about it. We're all for helping agriculture. We wouldn't be here. But that's something that we need to pay attention to and we need to fix that. But thank you. Appreciate your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chairman Mao. Good point. You know, we do have things called amendments. And in that discussion, we can definitely define this very carefully to make sure that we're accomplishing the goal. And that is to feed our children so that they're healthy and they can grow and become healthy adults and produce wonderful things. So this, this bill, in the overwhelming view of it, is so positive. And those other, other programs that we have demonstrate the necessity of doing this, you know, for the health of our children, which becomes the health of our future. The other thing is combining and bringing us together so that our local PA farmers, you know, we push hard on PA preferred and so we should because we have dedicated farmers here in Pennsylvania to produce quality food. So Representative Mao, or Chairman Mao, more than happy to sit down with anybody and everybody to make sure that what we do pass is going to work for all of us. Thank you. Representative Takeak will be taking over the chairman position. Representative Schwerer had another event that they had to attend. So Representative Takeak, you have a question as well?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, it's a mixed bag. I'm stepping in for Pete Schwerer. I had a question. I wanted to come back to, you know, to, to build on Chairman Mao's question. I mean, disadvantage of not having healthy foods or sufficient foods, you know, food insecurity, both in school and at home. The connection between the two. I wondered if you could comment on the abrupt cancellation of the $13 million in the Local Food Purchasing Assistance Program? What schools and what our food banks are doing? And frankly, what our farmers are doing? Because as you mentioned, that was a really important market. So I'm just wondering if you might be able to comment first on the status of trying to get those funds back from, from the federal USDA? And secondly, what are schools and what are food banks doing to try and fill that gap? And how can this legislation perhaps help?
Sure. So with regard to the Local Food Purchase Assistance Cooperative Agreement Program, the Shapiro administration has filed a suit against USDA to try to restore that funding. To date, we have not heard an answer on that filing. We continue, or had been continuing to use the funding provided through the legislature for the past program to continue sourcing products from Pennsylvania producers, hoping to see continued funding for the past program in any state budget that is passed for this current state fiscal year. Our food banks, you know, are continuing to see challenges with, you know, they not only saw cuts to that program, they saw cuts to the T-Fat program. And they are quite frankly seeing record levels of demand that are being exacerbated by cuts that are coming from federal cuts in the Budget Reconciliation Bill to the SNAP program. We're seeing challenges as a result of, you know, the failures for the federal government to pass any type of continuing resolution. So we're seeing challenges with WIC funding, with SNAP funding there. It's a challenge. You know, in terms of what our schools are doing, our schools are continuing to do what they do every day. They are continuing to provide meals to those schools. And, you know, thankful that they do because for a lot of these kids, those are the only meals that they get. And, you know, our school food service professionals do amazing work with, you know, what they are given. They produce healthy nutritious meals for our kids day in and day out. They are doing what they can to get local foods, healthy nutritious foods to our kids. But they can always use some assistance from both the federal government and from the state legislature to help improve the resources they have so that we can get even better foods into the hands of those kids. Because as I mentioned, you know, hunger isn't something that just happens in urban areas. It happens in every single county of the entire Commonwealth. It's not, it happens in rural areas. It happens in suburban areas. It happens everywhere.
And if I might just add that, which makes this Keystone Fresh initiative even more important in light of all the other cuts, in my opinion. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Representative. And because of time, I'm going to allow one more question from Representative Glynn and Representative Razzle. We will maintain your question once we get through the other panels. So Representative Glynn, you're the last question.
Thank you, Chairman. I was just wondering, based off of the levels that you've put into this legislation, the student enrollment ranges or the award amount ranges on page six of the bill are not uniform. They're not uniformly set. How will you determine the amount that will actually be provided to, within those ranges? I, I see that you're going to be hiring somebody in the Department of Ag and you're going to be hiring somebody in the Department of Ed who are supposed to, I guess, be working together. But what is the criteria there to determine the amount?
I believe the criteria is based on the school enrollment size with the larger schools receiving a larger grant, obviously because there's more, more students to provide meals or to provide produce, Pennsylvania produce, Pennsylvania product to.
Right, but the ranges, even within that population, are quite large. I guess I'm, I'm wondering, like, I have a rural school with only 3,000 kids in it and they could receive up to 120 or they could receive like a lot less within that range. How are you going to determine what they're going to get?
I, I think those are also some of the details that would need to be worked out as we continue to, to dialogue about this bill. I think those are just ranges, as, as you said, and without, without the details of actually determining what the grant application would need to include to determine what the actual amount would be.
Okay, and will that also include, like, if you have a veteran farmer and a new beginning farmer, which one of those get higher preference over the other?
Again, I think probably details that need to be kind of worked out in the discussion, discussion of the, of the bill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Representative. And now I would like to thank on behalf of all of us, both your attention and good work that you all do. Continue on. And I don't know if you're going to stick around afterwards. We have questions that could last a day or two. This is such a tremendous piece of legislation trying to do the right thing. So all of us that represent various districts, that's for us to collaborate and make sure we come up with that plan that works. So thank you once again. Appreciate it. And now the second panel. If you'll come forward. We have Crystal Hampton Davis, owner of the Davis Grown Farm in Skookil County. We have Joseph Edmund Dunson. Did I say that right? Edmund Dunson? Edmanson. Sorry, Edmanson, culinary arts instructor and director of food service at Columbia Montour Area Vocational Technical School. And we also have Gage Monroe, senior at the Columbia Montour Area Vocational Technical School. That's going to give us a dissertation about how good our culinary arts instructor is. Well, welcome. And please feel free to begin. Crystal? Make sure your mic is on. There you go.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you for having me here today. So some of the other panel members had mentioned earlier about the Farm to Institution and the money that was going towards there and getting information, education out to producers, which that, that's what I do. I'm a producer here in Pennsylvania. I attended that conference and that started the ball rolling for me, getting things into the schools for the students. I have a background in education. I was a math teacher. I was an administrator. And then I had my kids and my oldest started school. And within a couple of months of attending school, I noticed some pounds packing on. And I was like, what's going on here? And, I mean, I obviously sit in a chair for a long time during the day and not having that movement that he has at home on the farm, but also the foods that he was getting. So I started looking at how we can, or what we can do in that capacity. And when I attended the institution, light bulbs went off. You know, I, I didn't even leave there and I started contacting the local school districts to see how we could partner with them, what we could do to get the local schools, or local food to these students in the schools. Local foods, they're not traveling miles. They're not traveling through, you know, so many different hands. Different things happen. They spoil. They, they're not as fresh as they, they could be. So as much as we can get to these students. So that whole, that whole process started. By the next school year, we were, we had ground beef in four different, four different buildings. An early childhood elementary center, or an early childhood care center, a nine to 12 school, and two K to 12 schools. So we started with our ground beef. And the PA Beef Program, who was receiving a grant, I believe that was a federal grant that they were receiving, they were covering half the cost of the beef to have it in the school districts. That obviously has since gone away. And we are only still partnering with one school district on the beef every month. And that is due to a, the Pennsylvania Farm to School grant that they had received for over two years. So this is their second year in that. We also supply beef tips to that school and sweet corn. And with the Columbia Montour Votec, we supply them, we were supplying them with ground beef until the, the grant went away for PA Beef. But they've also, up there now getting eggs from us and they got sweet corn this year and we've continued that partnership. In the past, they've also, we've also used PA pork. They, they supplied a half a pig to the Columbia Montour Votec so they could break it down. So bringing that all together, the, the students at Columbia Montour Votec, they also, they get to work with our products. So they get to work with local meats, local produce, and see the difference. And as I'm sure they're going to attune to is, you know, how, how different that is. But also, our family, my husband and I, we have also taken on the initiative of the education with these students. So we've gone into the classroom. We've gone into the yards of the schools. We've gone into their parking lots. We've pressed cider with them. We've hustled the sweet corn with them. We've shown them where it's coming from. This is all due to a lot of the SNAP ed program, but we've also done it on our own. We go in, we read books. I do different information sessions with different, with the different school districts, even ones that aren't purchasing from us. If they, if they want something, you know, I'm, as much as we can connect the farm to what these students are eating is so important. We do the local farmer's market. At the local farmer's market, the number of students that come up to us and are like, hey, we had your beef last week, you know? Or thanks for the sweet corn. That was so good. When are we doing the apple cider pressing again? That they're making that connection to the farmer. And the school districts have also noticed on those days when they're serving the local things that they can connect to someone or connect to a local farm, the students are buying more lunch. And as one of the other panel members said, that, you know, in comparison, looking at the healthy food options and how the students are performing, when they're eating the school lunch, they're doing better. And so if we can get these students to eat the school lunch And so if we can get these students to eat the school lunch and we're supplying local foods that are fresher, you know, probably have a little bit more nutrient density because they're not sitting in a freezer as long, it's going to improve our students. And that, I mean, our children are, like everyone has said, our future. And so that, that's kind of where, where I fall into all this. We can, we're continuing the education, we've done a lot with not only the schools, but also in our community. We participate in Ag Awareness Day. I'm trying to think of any other events that I participated in recently. But yeah, it's just, it's, it's been eye opening too, to see how responsive the students and the parents are and how receptive they are to it. And pushing, like, I go in usually on our beef tip day in October because October is also Beef Awareness Month, that, you know, it's there. And they usually try and serve at Bloomsburg, they usually try and serve the beef tips one day along with the apples. And I usually try and go in that day, at least to one of the buildings, and see how the students are responding to it. And the students who didn't realize it was that day, they're like, can I please get lunch today? Like, they are begging for it. And usually, as long as there's enough left over, the cafeteria workers, they, they give it to them. But how excited they are for having something local that they like to eat, that is, that they enjoy, and how important that is.
Thank you very much, we'll hold our questions till all three testify here today. Did you hear that word, testify? No, no, that's the wrong word. You're just going to share your great thoughts with us.
Okay.
Joseph?
Yes. So, good morning, chairpersons, members of the committees, and fellow participants. My name is Joseph Edmondson, I serve as the Culinary Arts Instructor at Direct and Food Service for Columbia Montour Area Vocational Technical School. I am here with Gage Monroe, one of my students, and one of my local farmers, Crystal Hampton, to voice our support of this House Bill 1768 Keystone Fresh Act. Every day I see firsthand the power of food in our schools. It's not just calories on a tray, it's an investment in student health and our farmers' livelihoods. It's enriching our local economy, and too often, through our school food dollars, leave Pennsylvania and go to suppliers across the country or overseas. And that is money we will never see again. It leaves our farmers, producers, and our students shortchanged. The Keystone Fresh Act is not just another policy. It is a statement that Pennsylvania believes that feeding its students with Pennsylvania food is where we see fit. When we spend our public dollars on school meals, those funds should be staying in our communities, building jobs, strengthening our local farms, and giving our students fresher and higher quality meals that they can be proud of. At Columbia Montour AVTS, we've proven how local sourcing can be, how powerful local sourcing can be. Since 2023, we've partnered with Davis Grown to supply ground beef for our schools, and that relationship has grown over the years. This year, we've purchased their sweet corn, last year, they helped raise a pig for our culinary students to process as part of their training, and now this year, they're supplying us with fresh eggs. We also work with local bakeries for bread products, a local produce supplier for fruits and vegetables. These are not just purchases, they're partnerships that connect our classroom, our cafeteria, and our community together. In my submitted testimony, I have included screenshots from social media posts. These photos highlight that our students are working with local farms and serving Pennsylvania products with pride. Our, every school in this state should have that opportunity to tell their similar stories, and the Keystone Fresh Act help makes this possible. This act helps school food authorities meet USDA's Buy American requirements. These mandates are clear, schools should prioritize United States grown food. But for many districts, especially rural and underfunded ones, that is a challenge. The Keystone Fresh Act would help level the playing field, making compliance realistic and ensuring that Pennsylvania schools buy from Pennsylvania farms and not just somewhere else in the country. As an educator, I see how these efforts teach more than just nutrition. When students eat apples that are grown in Adams County or consume dairy from Lancaster County, they gain pride of their state and awareness of agriculture's value in their lives and a sense of responsibility for supporting their local economies. And that lesson is something that will stay with them long after they leave my cafeteria. Now, I wanted to talk and touch base on some of the financial realities that schools face every day. School cafeterias, as many people are unaware, have to operate as self-supporting enterprises. They are separate from the general school food budget, school budgets. That means we do not get our share of local property taxes. We rely entirely on meal reimbursement, student payments, and occasional grants. From that limited revenue, we must cover food, labor, supplies, utilities, and everything that it takes to basically run a restaurant inside of a school building. At CMAVTS yearly, we range between 40 to 50% of our students qualifying for free and reduced through the National School Lunch Program. For those meals, I will receive $4.20 and $4.60 per student for a reimbursable meal. The remaining 60% of the students, I receive a combination of reimbursement for participating in, from the National School Lunch Program and the amount that they pay for their lunch, which totals about $3.89. When you average those numbers out, when I serve roughly 400 meals a day, it means I must produce my meals for $4.10 and still cover all of my costs. Included in my testimony is a chart of the federal reimbursement rates for the 25, 26 school year, and this is what the rates that schools across the state work with every day. We stretch every dollar, but that margin leaves very little room to buy local products consistently. Programs like the Keystone Fresh would finally give cafeterias like mine the flexibility to turn these occasional local purchases into a standard practice, strengthening schools and farms together. Every reimbursable meal we serve is not just food, it's a financial lifeline that keeps our kitchens open, our staffs employed, and our students fed. At the same time, our rural committees, communities are searching for ways to keep young people engaged in agriculture and proud from where their food comes from. I urge you to support this legislation. This is not just about food, it's about building local economies, educational opportunities, and the future of Pennsylvania agriculture. By passing the Keystone Fresh, you're telling every farmer, every student, and every school in Pennsylvania believes in growing the food to feed its own. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Joseph. We'll be back to you on that. And now the star of the show. Gage, how you doing, buddy?
Very good, how are you today?
I'm, I can't wait, I can't wait for this testimony.
Thank you.
Take it, it's all yours.
Good morning, Pennsylvania House of Representatives. My name is Gage Monroe. I'm a senior at Columbia Montour Area Vocational Technical School in Bloomsburg, Pennsylvania, currently enrolled in our Culinary Arts Program. While I've studied culinary arts for three years, my experience in the kitchen goes back much further. For as long as I can remember, I have been in a kitchen. For example, when I was three, my dad taught me how to make an omelet. Or when I was five, and I would bake with my grandmother after church. When I was 10, I entered my first baking competition at the Bloomsburg Fair and took second place in the PA Preferred Baking category with my zucchini and carrot brownies with a pineapple glaze. I did not. I come from pretty large families on both sides, and one thing they both had in common was food. It brought us together. My dad's family is majority Italian. Growing up with that culture, I learned the true importance of locally sourced ingredients and how significantly they can impact the flavors of a dish. As I moved into the Culinary Arts Program, I began to see firsthand how locally sourced ingredients elevate both the flavor and presentation of my dishes. Having seen the difference in both taste and presentation of my foods, when using locally sourced products, I can confidently say that there is a difference. Mr. Edmondson always says that consumers eat with their eyes. Before a meal ever touches silverware, the customer will always inspect their dish whether they realize it or not. Local ingredients don't just taste better, they make food look more vibrant and appetizing. Locally sourced ingredients are less processed, which allows for the natural beauty of them to truly come to light and elevate a dish's presentation. The importance of buying local stems far from just the appeal. Buying locally grown foods is not only better for the consumer, but also better for the rural economy. Where I come from, many students have worked on or their families own farms. For many farmers in my community, finding reliable markets for their produce can be challenging. Samantha Aub, an associate economist, wrote for the American Farm Bureau Federation, "The U.S. Courts report that 216 farm bankruptcies were filed in 2024, up 55% from 2023." A data graph from the same article shows the distribution of the 216 bankruptcies between the 50 states. This graph shows Pennsylvania as having two bankruptcies. While two may not seem like a very large number, each represents a family forced to uproot their lives and workers left without jobs. In addition to rural economic reasons, local food in our schools encourages students to buy local foods in the future. Bringing locally sourced ingredients into our schools gives students the chance to experience the difference between frozen government commodities and fresh local produce. Having the opportunity to experience this difference at a young age can encourage students to pursue healthier diets through less processed and locally sourced foods. At my school, the culinary arts students help prepare and serve lunches for the 617 students at CMAVTS. I have been serving on our lunch lines at least once a week for three school years, and I cannot recount the number of times I have heard jokes about school lunches. A lot of these jokes refer, revolve around mystery meats. Mystery meat refers to meat of unknown origin or content. And too often, that's how students feel about what's on their lunch trays. When students make these jokes, I don't have the ability to inform them because I'm not sure of the exact origin of our government products either. However, with the Keystone Fresh Act that we are here advocating for today, I could tell my fellow students that not only is the food truly fresh, but I can tell them it came from a farm in our area. One of those farms being Davis Grown. My school has a growing partnership with Davis Grown Farms, where we get products such as ground beef, eggs, pork cuts, and corn. We hope that our partnership can continue to thrive with the help of this bill. More importantly, we want all students across Pennsylvania to have the same opportunities to eat healthier, fresher foods. And we hope this bill will allow them to do just that, giving more schools the opportunity to build partnerships with local farms, just like ours has. The Keystone Fresh Act will strengthen Pennsylvania's agricultural economy, improve student health, and give parents peace of mind about what their children are eating. As someone who has spent their entire life surrounded by the benefits of quality meals, I can say that buying local is important for the quality of our food. It allows cafeteria staff to take pride in what they serve, students to feel proud of what they eat, and you, our legislators, to take pride in making a lasting difference. Thank you for your time and consideration of this bill.
Thank you very, very much, all three of you. You have just set an example of how you can work together and make great things happen. Tremendous admiration for all three of you, as a former teacher too. You did a great job there with Gage, and, and your background also, so vast, tremendous amount of experience. You know what else I like? The heart, you guys have heart. The other thing I want to definitely, definitely promote, we talked about PA Preferred, and you used the word pride many times. And that is exactly what that PA Preferred symbol should also be about. It's Pennsylvania grown here in Pennsylvania. We have great products here, wonderful people that work hard to produce it. And all we're trying to do now is buy more from our local farmers so that they can continue on the great work that they're doing. So at this, I'm going to open it up for some questions we have. Of course, we have Chairman Mao again.
I just can't resist, thank you, Chairman. I'm a huge believer in VOTEC education, I think that's the direction this country needs to go, so thank you for what you do. And thank you for, for being the, the farmer that is providing a good, fresh food to our, our students across Pennsylvania. Every single school district in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania should be trying to source as much locally as they can, period. It's their obligation to do just that. As it was mentioned, how many farms filed bankruptcy? And, I mean, it's incredible. This will help stop that. We need to keep our number one industry, our number one industry. And, young man, I'll just say this. You're one very impressive young man, and you've got two great careers in front of you. One, I think you'll be a great chef. And the other one, you'll be a great radio announcer or an orator somewhere. You did perfectly, congratulations, thank you for your testimony, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Representative Sapi?
Thank you, Chairman. This is, I love this because I love education and farming and, you know, this nexus of where this all comes together and food preparation. So thank you so much for your testimony and for how much you care about the kids and what they eat. You know, childhood hunger doesn't choose rural or urban or suburban areas, it's something we, we need to think about. And we, we know for sure that kids who have access to food and, you know, fresh local food do better in school, we know that. One of the questions I have is about cold storage facilities. And does, you know, anything that is, you're using come from a cold storage facility either in the, in the school or at the VOTEC Center? I just, I, I, this is something that goes on in my area, there are large, you know, cold storage facilities and, you know, they're, they're trucking in a lot of foods that you guys can't grow here, like bananas and berries and, and basically everything is stored. So is that, is anything that you use passing through a cold storage, or would it go straight to the school for preparation?
So the stuff that we would get from Davis comes directly from them, and then the other products that I would purchase is through the procurement process. Like, I work with a group, CAFCO, which is a bunch of school districts across the state, the group partner together to help us get through the procurement process by making a market basket of all of us combined together. And then we purchase through food distributors. So I'm not sure on their chain of where they would use a cold storage facility, that I'm not aware of.
Thank you, I'm just concerned about how, how, you know, how long it's been there, how long it's been stored, and are, would we be achieving the goal here?
So it was about two weeks ago that our school had gotten about 12 baskets of ears of corn from Davis Grown Farms. That same day, our culinary arts students took those 12 baskets of corn, processed them, and prepared them for school lunches to be served. Those were processed same day as delivery, ready to go, and then set in our walk-in freezers that we have to be ready to use, to be used for school lunches.
That is ideal, thank you so much.
So yes, came right from the field to them, so no cold storage there.
Just, just as a point of preference, the cold storage many times is used for your food banks because they don't have that kind of process, so they have to be able to store it in order to provide the food when they need it. And Representative Kupa?
So I want to say, I, I come from a farming family, my, my family, my husband's family, I actually, one of my favorite things to do in high school was to stop at my husband, not husband then, but his corn stand in the summertime, it was the highlight of my week. But, so my husband's family has had a vegetable farm for years, and they've always done the roadside stand, my kids are always out there. I absolutely love the overarching idea of this. Just, we all know, anybody that comes from a farming background, or if you don't, you're going to your local, you know, farmer's markets, we know that it's a better taste, it's a better quality. So I absolutely support the overarching idea behind this. I do, my brother-in-law's the director of a CTC in Green County, which is the southwestern part of Pennsylvania. I have concerns, and this may have been a, a better question for the Department of Ag and Department of Ed. Will our CTCs and our CTIs, will we be, will you be eligible, as this bill is currently listed, to be one of the school districts that are submitting to be an applicant? But then also, as a big advocate for FFA and our ag programs, would it not be absolutely wonderful? And to some extent, I think you already are doing this, but you're consuming what you're growing and what you're producing, and what kind of pride would our students have if they're eating what they have grown? So, so do you have any concerns about the existing language and whether that needs to be tweaked so that our CTCs and our CTIs can actually, I mean, really take, you know, charge with this and run with it?
So in my review of the bill, I didn't see anything that flags on my end that would exclude me, but when it comes to career and tech centers, many of the career and tech centers across the state, they are halftime models or partials, so they do not serve a meal. We have the fortunate nature of being a comprehensive career and tech center, we are one of 17, I believe, in the state. We are one of 17, I believe, in the state. So, we have our students all day. So we have our students, they receive their academic learning that they need, and then also their vocational training as well. Many other career and tech centers across the state, they receive their academic at their sending district, and then they would just receive their career and tech. So they're only at the career and tech center for two hours. So we participate in the National School Lunch Program, but many other career and tech centers do not because they just simply do not serve a lunch.
And, and that would be the case with my home district. And, and I'm putting you on the spot, and I, and I need to do, do, do a deep dive into the language, but do you happen to have an opinion on whether or not a CTC that's not that full-time model, whether they could take the agricultural product that they are producing and then send it to their, you know, to one of the homeschool districts that's sending kids to that CTC? So if, if the ag kids are growing chickens, or a hog, or what have you, can they then be a provider to one of the homeschool districts?
That definitely could be a process that could be put together. The only restriction I could see would be depending upon the time and availability. One of the things that, as an educator for a career and tech center, is a lot of halftime models because of the time that they have. They need to make sure that they're meeting to the students program of study task list, and they are spending the appropriate amount of time making sure the students know everything they need to receive their education. But that definitely is something that could be wrapped up into that process, and that could be something, a partnership between the sending districts and their career and tech center that they could definitely do.
Okay. I do have, I do have one last question. The, the way that the bill is worded, that preference shall be given to applicants sourcing from those, and there were the veteran, the veteran farmers and ranchers, which I absolutely support, farmers or ranchers who are from socially disadvantaged groups, newer beginning farmers or ranchers or farmers, or ranchers that use sustainable agricultural techniques. And then, and Chairman Mao had given that definition of socially disadvantaged groups. And, and it is, it's a wide range under the current definition. Everything from race, color, national origin, age, disability, or status, religion, sexual orientation, genetic information, political beliefs. Can you believe that? Political beliefs. Because of their membership in the group or their shared characteristics. So my question to you all as educators and as, you know, consumers of the product and as somebody that's cooking it, does it matter at all what race, what's the race of the farmer is who's providing you these goods?
So, part of that is, education is a way to help support communities. And as a educator, I like to make sure for students that they are aware of where their products are coming from. And part of what I see as somebody who is dealing with, dealing with public funds and money, making sure that that fund is given equitably, and it is used as a stepping stone for groups to rise up from struggles that they've had.
So, and I appreciate that. Maybe I should have led with, does the marital status matter? Does, does the political beliefs of the farmer matter in terms of connecting this good, wholesome, nutritious, locally grown product to the school? And I would submit that it doesn't. And it's unfair, I would have preferred to ask these questions to the panel in front of you, because I love, I love all three of you and what all, what you're doing and your passion for this, but you are going to find people that, like me, would be very supportive of this bill, are not going to get behind it if it has reverse discrimination so that your struggling farmer, who maybe it's a white man or a white woman who their family has been farming for generations, who are on the verge of financial collapse, can't take advantage of this program because it's reverse discrimination in action. So, I apologize that you were the opportunity that I got to speak. I love what you're doing, keep doing what you're doing, but just be aware that, that there are those issues. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna hold on to questions now. Here's what I'm going to recommend, because this is certainly a great issue, and I want to make sure there's clarity so that everyone understands the goodness behind this, this bill, the purpose behind this bill. So I'm willing to stay afterwards. We do have a time constraint, and we have another panel that we definitely have to come up here. So if you, anybody would like to continue the conversations, including our representatives, we're happy to do that afterwards. But I'm going to have to try to move on to Panel Three. Thank you so very much. I will be sticking around afterwards, so we'll catch up. Panel Three. We have Kelly Price, who's the Director of Food Services from Mannheim Township School District, Scotty Miller, Farm Manager from Masonic Village, Donna Robbins, Chief Operating Officer of Mannheim Township School District. Kelly, you're first. You got that down now? You've been waiting all this time?
Oh, boy. I don't know if I want to follow the student, I think.
He was good.
Okay. So I did provide some color printouts for some pictures of what we're doing in our district as we go along here. So, good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity to testify in support of the Pennsylvania Keystone Fresh Act. As the Food Service Director for Mannheim Township School District, I am very passionate about connecting students to fresh, local foods through the Farm-to-School Program, making it part of our meal program every day. This program ensures that we bring fresh, locally grown foods directly to our students' plates. I'm both a registered dietitian and a chef that's trained in culinary arts, and because of this, I think a lot about how to balance nutrition, what the kids are eating, and what they actually, what we actually serve on the, on the plates. So I'm here today to highlight how the Farm-to-School is transforming our lunch program, not just by changing what's on the plate, but by changing how our students connect with their food, their health, and their community. We accomplish this by visiting local farms, continuing conversations in the classrooms, connecting with the community through our social media pages, and developing educational materials for the student engagement in the breakfast and lunch lines directly. Community is just that, it's taking everyone. Everyone needs to play a part in some part of our Farm-to-School initiative. Our goal for our district this year is to serve 1 million meals, that is breakfast and lunch combined. With that being said, parents, staff, community members need to trust us to feed their students, and we use our social media pages to be completely transparent about what is happening daily in our cafeteria to also gain some of our community's support. On Slide Three, one of my favorite parts of my job is creating a Farm-to-Tray experience by connecting the kids to our local food systems. This occurs when events such as visiting farms, cooking clubs, and eating what we learned about that day on the farm directly in the cafeteria are so impactful. I truly love teaching kids where their food comes from, especially here in Lancaster, PA, when we're surrounded by all these great local farms. Hands-on visits like this at the farm get the students excited and engaged. So we visited a beef farm at Nisley Brothers. We also visited Scotty at Masonic Village. And we also visited Heritage Creek Farm Camp, where the students learned more about different produce. One of them was very excited about the chicken. They thought we were going to a dairy farm, and I'm like, guys, there's not chickens on the dairy farm. So they were very excited about learning at the actual farm where we had chickens at poultry. All right. On Slide Four, farm visits spark the curiosity, but learning doesn't stop there. We bring these lessons back to the classroom to deepen their understanding. We have cooking clubs with students, farmers come to visit during assemblies, they also come to help with our food service staff and network to connect for how other food service directors can purchase. So on this slide, you can see our students, after we visited Scotty at the beef farm, we came back to make meatballs with the students using the beef from his farm. Scotty also came to read to some of our students, the younger kids, about K-2. And then you can see a group of different farmers, including a local orchard, Scotty, a Harvest Lane was a local 100-acre farm is also there with Dane, and we also had a whole group of local food service directors there to learn then how to purchase and continue our Farm-to-School initiative. So what does Farm-to-School look like for our district? The farms that you'll find at our school currently that serve in our breakfast and our lunch lines are places like Kaufman's. The kids, someone said earlier, eat with their eyes first, so offering a rainbow of colors on the plate makes healthy eating much more fun and appealing. We had apples, plums, peaches, pears, and cider from Harvest Lane this year, or from Kaufman's, I'm sorry. From Harvest Lane, we had cucumbers, tomatoes, cantaloupe, peaches, and fresh basil that we even use in our pizzas. Masonic, we do ground beef, roasts, and some beef cubes. And we also visit our local produce auctions, where we're buying directly from the Amish and the farmers that are coming directly to the auction. And that this year so far has been watermelon, cantaloupe, broccoli, peppers, zucchini, ground cherries, potatoes, and so many other items. So on the next slide, you'll see Kaufman's Orchard, and you'll see there where they see the rainbow of colors that makes the plate even more healthy and appealing and so much more fun. You'll see us there, we have our plums from Kaufman's, our apples. We try to put up signs for the students so they can see that the plums are called Ruby Queen Plums. What do they taste like? What's the texture like? What should they expect when they start eating them? Every week, we have a different variety of apple, from Autumn Crisp to Sansa Apples to Honeycrisp Apples to Fuji Apples, all different types of apples. So the kids get really excited to see, oh, what's on the sign? What are we seeing today for our local produce? Our next farm was from Harvest Lane, is a Mannheim Township District Farm. It's amazing to see how the students get excited when they see the name of the farm that they shop with, with their families at home. It turns the meal into something personal and meaningful, which strengthens their connection to both food and their community. At Harvest Lane, we would do things with the PA Harvest of the Month that Vonda had mentioned earlier. The top picture there is of the corn salad with the tomatoes. You can see all the fresh peaches from the farm, from Harvest Lane, and then you can see on our pizza oven where we're actually using the basil in some of the recipes as For our Masonic Beef Farm here with Scotty, we had used also the PA Beef Farm-to-Schools Grant, which is not active currently, but we have for the past five years. I use this example as always my gateway farm. I feel like this was our very first connection that we made to a farmer, and that actually opened the door to many other connections that we now have. We were able to bring the beef in to the farm, and the students loved visiting the farm, knowing where their beef came from. It became very, like a full circle moment, visiting the farm, having the beef for lunch, providing the students with the beef in the cooking club, and then the students were really excited to find out that it was from a graduate from the actual district they And then directly, the other option that we have for Farm-to-School is the produce auction. This is how we get, the local produce auctions give us a direct access to Farm-to-School products sourced right from the growers. When we're able to go to the farm, the local auctions, we are not just picking up the product, but we're building those relationships with farmers and bringing the fresh local produce straight to the students. So this picture shows you when we go to the actual market, what it looks like to bid on the produce with the Amish, you know, right there, and then we bring them back to find new and unique things. One of the unique things for this fall was a Honey Nut Squash, where the kids, you can see in the bottom, were roasted off, and they were able to eat that with the skin and everything, and having an educational piece up there to talk about what it was. Most of them were very excited to see, they never knew purple pepper existed. So that was one of the fun things from the auction this year. While all the sourcing, while sourcing directly from farms gives us incredible freshness, it also presents some challenges. So for example, when the food comes from the local farms, it also often comes by wagon, as you can see here, horse and buggy, horse and wagon, whatever you want to call it, by the Amish, and they come in very large bulk bins. The farmers don't have the resources to wash them, or peel them, or process them in the way that we need for school kitchens. So we have 6,300 students that we feed every day to get to that goal of a million meals. So for us to be able to process a bin of broccoli that large would take us all day to be able to process it and get it off the stocks. So if the farmers would have ways and funds to be able to process the items for us, it would be much easier to get them into the schools quickly for us to use. We're very limited on staffing hours and need to do in-depth processing to be able to get the food ready for students for the day. So part of the Keystone Fresh Act would help with this equipment to support the PA producers to meet the needs of the school district. And then our next slide is from our Seeds to Success. At the end of the day, the Farm-to-School is more than just about where our food comes from, it's about what it looks like on the plate and what it means to our students. When you walk into the cafeteria, you see bright colors that are grown by local hands. You see more than just a meal. Students and the community see the connection between where their food comes from and the nutritional value that it provides. As you can see on this picture, just look how amazing all the colors are and the meals that we have for our students, it's just stunning. Students are excited to make these healthy choices and try a variety of different foods. This is truly the power of Farm-to-School, in my opinion. We also are able to link in a lot of cultural diversity and different types of meals for the students to try as well that aren't typical things that you would see in the school cafeteria.
Thanks, Kelly. Thanks, Kelly. And by the way, that, those pictures worth a thousand words. You did good. 994 words. All right, Scotty, it's all yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you all for the opportunity to share today, and thank you as well for the jobs that you do on behalf of the Commonwealth. I appreciate the opportunity to testify in support of the Pennsylvania Keystone Fresh Act. I am Scotty Miller, Farm Manager from Masonic Villages of Elizabeth Town. I am married and have three children, and we also own our own farm right outside of Elizabeth Town. When my children were in school, and looking back to when I was in school, which is a little farther than I like to admit some days, I was thinking of what the school lunches would have consisted of at that time. And I was worried about what we were feeding our kids who were currently in school at the time. Also, the kids who ate, yeah, worried about what the kids were, what we were feeding our kids who ate at school. Also, those kids that may get free meals at school or discounted meals, they as well should be given the opportunity to receive the best possible local food and ingredients. I manage a farm from Masonic Villages. We are cow, calf, and feeder finisher operation. We are nestled among 1,800 residents on about 1,700 acres, right in the heart of Elizabeth Town. We grow our own crops on 500 acres that we use to sustain our herd and the feeder cattle. We currently run 175 cows that we calve out in the spring and the fall as well. We also have our own herd bulls that we use for natural breeding, so we really have pretty good control over our animals from the beginning to the end. We market our beef either by selling whole, halves, or quarters. We also sell by the piece through our farm market on campus, which is open to the public as well, four days a week. We also supply our own in-house food services departments with our beef, which is bred, born, and raised right on campus, with food that we grow on campus to feed the cattle. Talk about full circle. We know what is going into the cattle and what we're going to get out. This idea of knowing what goes into and what is going to be produced from that, a great product to serve at special occasions, but also something that every school should have the opportunity to serve our children, to help fuel their minds and bodies for growth and development, especially in their formative years. We currently raise more cattle than we need to feed our own residents and what gets sold to the farm market. Plus, when you harvest and process an animal, you tend to end up with a little more ground beef than other cuts. So over time, ground beef can add up, and this can lead to a time where we have to slow down harvest and maybe minimize the selling or purchasing of some special cuts that a lot of folks like to get. Through our current program, run by the PA Beef Council, PA Beef to PA Schools, which is a grant match program which is on hold at the moment, they pay for half the cost of the beef to schools. This allows up the opportunity to be able to move ground beef and to keep all our beef fresher for everyone. Plus, it's going to local schools, one of which I had graduated, Kelly noted, from, so it's really neat to go full circle there as well. I really wish that some of the meals the children get to eat at school now, I would have been able to eat when I was there. Through this Keystone Fresh Act, I feel this will open up for more schools to be able to take advantage of local products to feed the children. Some impacts that have happened for us that I didn't realize before getting into this, communication directly with the school administration. They tend to want to know where this is coming from and who, who this guy is, right? I've been asked, through that, I've been asked to come into schools to read books and give talks on what farms do and what we do specifically, and what we supply their school with great quality beef. And that they can go and visit our farm, which is not far. It's not coming from a big name that trucks for miles and miles. This also opens up conversations about farming with children, and one that they take home to their parents and can share with them as well. It also gives a face or a name for all these folks to be able to, to be able to know and ask questions if they have them, instead of turning to Google or the internet. Through the current program, we are able to support a local USDA processing facility on a regular basis, which is a win-win for us, which is a win for us and a win for them. It also means I do not have to truck a lot of extra cattle farther to sell them, which helps the local economy. Through doing this, I know there are many more schools who really want to be able to serve good local products, especially beef, but they may not have the funds to do so. This would bust those doors wide open and be a huge win for all of Pennsylvania. I urge you to support this House Bill 1768, the Keystone Fresh Act, so that we can continue working with these local school food service departments, and so that they can help their students have the best learning experience.
Thank you very much, Scotty. Appreciate that. Donna, you're the closer now. That's a big one.
I'm the closer. Good morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify in support of the Pennsylvania Keystone Fresh Act. As the Chief Operating Officer for a district with more than 6,000 students, I have seen firsthand the impact that nutritious, locally sourced meals can have on students' health, focus, and overall success in the classroom. One important point I want to emphasize is that a school district's food service fund is a proprietary fund. This means that it is service fund is a proprietary fund. This means that it is completely separate from the district's general operating fund. It is designated to be self-sufficient, relying primarily on student participation and federal reimbursements to sustain operations. By law, food service funds cannot be used to cover educational expenses, nor can educational funds be diverted to support the food service program. Because a food service fund stands alone, any initiative that increases access to fresh, local foods, like the Keystone Fresh Act, provides a direct and meaningful benefit to students without creating additional burdens on local taxpayers or district operating budgets. Strengthening these programs not only supports Pennsylvania farmers and local economies, but it also ensures that our children are receiving healthy meals, the healthy meals they need to succeed. The Pennsylvania Farm-to-School Grant Program has been a strong first step, but its limited funding and reach prevents it from serving all schools. At Mannheim Township, as you've heard, we want to, we want to purchase more local foods, but the resources simply aren't there. With greater support, we can make local food a consistent part of our daily meals. The Keystone Fresh Act builds on this foundation by expanding reach and moving beyond one-time grants to create sustainable, ongoing partnerships. The Keystone Fresh Act supports the missions of both the Department of Education and the Department of Agriculture. It provides healthier, fresher meals that improve student outcomes, while also strengthening the local agriculture economy and connecting family farms to stable buyers. There is no question that local procurement requires additional time, staff coordination, and training. The Keystone Fresh Act helps districts by providing resources to help us hire and train staff to manage local purchasing, navigate food safety requirements, procurement laws, and vendor relationships. The Keystone Fresh Act strengthens Pennsylvania's local economy. Every dollar invested in local food stays in our communities by supporting family farmers, food processors, distributors, truckers, and local markets. These dollars recirculate, creating jobs and sustaining small businesses. This act is not only about providing students with fresher, healthier meals, it is also about fueling local economic growth and keeping Pennsylvania's agriculture economy strong. We all know that students learn more when they eat better. Fresh fruits and vegetables have shown to improve focus, attendance, and student behavior. Farm-to-school local food incentives also create teachable moments, directly connecting nutrition, agriculture, and sustainability to curriculum goals. At Mannheim Township, our students are so engaged in this work as well. For example, our new student-driven sustainability group called To Can You Can is exploring how food choices affect the environment and the broader community. The demand does exist. Our food, our food service team wants and is buying local. Our students prefer local fresh foods. Our community values supporting PA local farms. In conclusion, as the Chief Operating Officer of a large district, I evaluate every initiative through the lens of operational feasibility. The Keystone Fresh Act is not only visionary, it is implementable. It gives districts the tools, training, and structure to make local food procurement both practical and sustainable. In our district, stronger participation in school meals has improved our bottom line. Investing in local food is financially sustainable, beneficial to our students, and a win for the entire community. I thank you for your time this morning.
That was a great conclusion. You hit so many of those key points. And I know that we were beyond our 11 o'clock time, but I, as promised, I'm willing to stay, made arrangements so that you can still have the opportunity to discuss and ask questions. If there's anybody else that has to go, I understand it. But, at this point, I'm gonna continue on in this position, and if there's anybody that has any questions, be happy to take them now. Representative Takeak.
I always have one. Thank you, Chairman. Appreciate it. Just curious, can you elaborate a little bit on, you know, you mentioned the challenges of, I mean, I imagine that in many cases, school cafeterias are set up to basically open up a bunch of cans, dump, you know, and not to process fresh foods. That's a whole different thing. So, are you looking at this as a capital expenditure, in that you can absorb the operational costs of additional manpower and those kind of things? If you could just elaborate a little bit on that, I mean, what is the key factor? Is it getting the equipment, or then being able to have the funds to use them?
Actually, school, most school cafeterias now, I've been in five districts, so everyone's a little bit different and set up a little differently. But, most of them either have individual kitchens where everyone is able to process individually. I mean, the district I came from previously, we had full kitchens at every single building that we were able to process everything from start to finish. The district I'm at currently, we have more of like a hub type of scenario, where some of the three bigger buildings can process for the smaller buildings. But, I will say, I think from that side of buying like bulk produce when it comes, them being able to process it down a little bit farther for us, of not just having giant pieces, I mean, broccoli is a great example when it comes in those giant bins. Even if they could just get the leaves and the, down to the head part of it, that we could just cut into florets, it'd be a lot faster for us to process than taking an entire bin type scenario. I mean, when we cut watermelons, we cut 250 for the day, and we still managed to make it happen. But, we do it by hand. A lot of it is done by hand. Some of it will be that we will have to buy some equipment, like we had bought something, like, it's called a Roboku, where you can take all the peppers, stack them, and they make strips when you put them in, so you process the seed and the stems to come out, put them through, and then they become into pepper strips for fajita day. So, we'll be going through maybe 100 pounds of peppers. Yeah, they're very good.
You've developed your own manufacturing company.
Yeah. We find a way.
Well, I'm gonna stick around, because I got a whole bunch of questions. I want to thank everybody. I want to thank all the Chairman for being here today, Peach Wire, and now Representative Takeak, Representative Chairman Mao, and of course Chairman Burgos for all his good work on 1768. It's obviously a vital bill that we need to work on, make sure that we process it appropriately. There were concerns, and that's why I said we do have amendments. So, if there are things that we have to amend, I'm sure that will also take place. But, I don't want anybody to lose sight of, you know, the purpose of this bill. And the purpose of this bill is to try to make sure that we supply our kids, our future, nourishing food, so that they can grow physically, mentally. And, the other part relative to having the children visit those farms, see that process, you know, we learn by sight, we learn by hearing, we learn by doing. And when they get their hands into that, you know what else you discover? Hey, I'd like to become a chef. Hey, I'd like to become a farmer. Hey, I like animals. I'd like to be this kind of farmer, or that kind of farmer. And, that experience is absolutely imperative. So, if any of you have any suggestions relative or questions, don't hesitate. Just because we're finishing this process right now, the door is open to all of you. The one thing that I'm gonna leave everybody with, and I've said this countless times, I may have a solution, you may have a solution, you may have a solution, none of them work. But, when we come together and we discuss all those solutions, we will come up with a plan that will work. So, that invitation is open to you, okay? Thank you so very much. God bless.